For the City Council, for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for January sixth, two thousand and twenty five. We have three study items on our agenda tonight. Item number one is the Community Partners Grant Program Enhancements. Item number two is the two thousand and twenty five Capital Improvement Program Overview. And item number three is Pavement Rating Analysis and Pavement Management Program. We usually start our meetings off with the public comment, and we would do that this evening. No members of the public have signed up to speak at tonight's meeting. So we will go to agenda item number one. Mr. Goff, would you like to introduce this item?
Very briefly, Mary Ann and Cole are here this evening to talk about our Community Partner Grant Program. And council asked us to bring this back with some proposed amendments to the program. So we are here this evening to present those to you and ask for any feedback that you may have. Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Goff. It's a pleasure to be able to present these Community Partners Grant Program improvements to you tonight. Let's get started.
Okay.
So let's begin with an overview of the agenda. We're going to start with an introduction of the issue, then move on to discuss some of the challenges that we're facing, some improvement proposals to address those challenges, and then go over the recommendations one last time. So to begin with, the Community Partners Grant Program provides funding to nonprofit agencies and programs for activities that benefit Wheat Ridge. Since its inception as that outside agency contribution program seventeen years ago, the CPGP has changed a lot. One of those changes is the application process. Previously, council decided all of the awards, but in two thousand and sixteen, council appointed a committee to review those applications. In two thousand and twenty three, there was a rebranding of the program from outside agency contribution to CPGP. And we've also seen a lot of changes in the number of applicants, in the number of requests that we're receiving, the size of those requests, and then the awards that were given out. This next table shows what some of those changes are. So if you can see, the applicants has risen from twenty five to forty three. Request has gone up from one hundred seventy one to three hundred eighty two thousand, and dollars awarded has gone up to one hundred thirty four thousand to two hundred thousand in two thousand and twenty four and one hundred seventy four thousand in two thousand and twenty five. And those are just the changes that we've seen since two thousand and twenty one for the program. So quite significant. We think some of those changes in the number of applicants are because we've done a fantastic job advertising the program. So shout out to Amanda and our communications team for that, but also because of the expiration of American Rescue Plan Act funding, meaning that a lot of these organizations have fewer funding sources to go to. So they're scrambling and they're looking for the funding programs that still exist, like the Community Partners Grant Program. With the growing number of applications that we're receiving, reviewing each application has become increasingly challenging for the committee. So the committee members evaluate each submission, which includes a detailed narrative application, a program budget detailing how the requested funds are going to be spent, and the applicant's financial documents. Altogether, in two thousand and twenty five, the applications exceeded well over three hundred fifty pages, which makes it extremely difficult for the committee members to give that close review to each organization that we hope they would be able to. Historically, the CPGP applicants have also been required to make a twenty minute presentation in the committee that usually consists of a ten minute presentation and then ten minutes for Q and A between the committee members and the applicant. In two thousand and twenty four, to accommodate the increasing number of applicants, we reduced the presentation time to seventeen minutes, so just a three minute reduction. But because of the number of applicants that we had, that shortened the overall schedule by two hours. Despite that change, the presentations that we did conduct still lasted over twelve hours. We're anticipating that this workload is going to continue to increase for the reasons I described earlier. And we are also anticipating that the demands of maintaining the current review process will increase accordingly. So to ensure the program's continued success, it's important to explore some strategies that improve the efficiency of the program and make sure that we're aligning awards with council's priorities. The need for these improvements was reinforced by the city council, which requested discussion on potential program improvements at the July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four study session. So having gone over some of the challenges that we're facing, we're going to be discussing some of these proposed improvements. First, we'll be discussing moving to a two-part review process that splits up our smaller and larger grants. Then we'll be discussing a shift in the Community Partners Grant Program timeline. Then we'd like to move on to have a review of the CPGP criteria and go over some of the parameters of the program as well. So throughout this presentation, you'll see that staff's recommendations are highlighted in bold among council's options. So let's start with that two-part review process. As I mentioned briefly, staff is recommending implementing a two-part review process that streamlines the evaluation of smaller grant requests, thereby allowing the committee more time to focus on larger grant requests. And here's kind of what it looks like. So we break it into these two categories, smaller and larger. The smaller grant requests are for those that are up to seventy five hundred dollars. And the idea is that they would be evaluated first based on their submission materials, and they would not be required to give a presentation. The committee would still be able to have a back and forth via questions with the applicant. Those would just go through staff and make sure that were answered. Or the committee could request a presentation if it seemed like they really did have a large amount of questions that a presentation would help to address. These smaller grant requests would be subject to an annual award cap because they would be reviewed first. So the way that would work would be, let's say if they had a two hundred thousand dollar budget, we would set aside about fifty thousand just for those smaller grant requests. That's a hypothetical number. It would change year to year based on the requests that we get, what the demand is, stuff like that. For our other category, the larger grant requests, those over seventy five hundred dollars, they would still be required to give a presentation, which is the typical CPGP review process. And then the remaining funds left over after the smaller grant requests were reviewed and awarded, those would be allocated to our larger grant requests. So building off the previous example with a two hundred thousand dollar budget, fifty thousand set aside for the smaller grants, whatever would be left, that one hundred fifty thousand dollars would be reserved for the larger grant requests to be awarded. In two thousand and twenty four, if we would have implemented this process, it would eliminate the need for fourteen out of forty three presentations, which would have saved the committee four hours of presentations. We would continue to annually reevaluate and adjust these thresholds. So we want to start with seventy five hundred, but we might adjust it, might go up to ten thousand, depending on how the applicants react to this new change and to the change in the program. After discussing this issue with the CPGP committee, they endorsed the proposed two-part application process. And when I discussed it with the two thousand and twenty four and two thousand and twenty five award recipients, they raised no concerns with this two-part process. So council's options here are, as staff recommended, to give consensus to adopt the staff recommended two-part review process. Alternatively, council could give consensus to adopt the staff recommended two-part review process with some changes, or they could do nothing and maintain the current CPGP review process. And at this point in the presentation, I'd like to pause to ask the council if you'd like to review all these improvements one by one, or if you'd like me to finish the presentation and then allow you to address those.
Counselor Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would suggest that because of how interconnected they are and there's not a lot of in-depth in each one, that we just continue on and do all three at the end.
I would concur with that.
Fantastic. Let's keep going then. All right, moving on to discuss the shift in the CPGP timeline. In two thousand and twenty four, the CPGP committee recommended two hundred thousand dollars in awards. But budget constraints later on in the year led to a ten percent reduction in the program's funding. While staff informed organizations about these potential budget reductions ahead of time, and none of the organizations were surprised by the time those budget cuts did come in, beginning the program with a solidified budget would be more ideal. So to avoid those future budget uncertainties, staff is recommending adjusting the timeline to more closely align with annual budget adoption processes. And here's what that would look like. So here in this table, you can see there's our CPGP milestones on the left, and then we have our current timeline and then our proposed timeline. So the way we envision it working is the applications would open in June, they would close in August. The committee would evaluate those requests in September, and then council would consider the committee's recommendations sometime prior to budget adoption, likely in October, maybe late September, depends on the year and things like that. Then council would move on to adopt their budget as they normally do, and the awards would still be delivered in February. So importantly there, there wouldn't be any change to when the organizations receive their funds. After discussing this issue with the committee, they endorsed the proposed timeline shift, and the two thousand and twenty four, two thousand and twenty five award recipients that I spoke with did not raise any concerns. So the council options here are, as staff is recommending, to adopt proposed timeline shift to more closely align with the budget process. Alternatively, council could give direction to adopt the proposed timeline shift, but with some changes, or do nothing and maintain the current timeline. All right, moving on to Community Partners Grant Program criteria. Our CPGP applicants, in their application form, they're instructed to design their applications and presentations to align with the program's established criteria as they were originally adopted by city council. Additionally, our committee also uses these criteria to score each of the applicants. So they kind of form the foundation of the program and really determines how everything is structured and who gets awards. So the criteria that we're currently working with, as originally were adopted by the city council, are identified community need, estimated number of Wheat Ridge residents served annually, program's impact on the quality of life for Wheat Ridge residents, and program's contributions to the health, safety, and welfare of Wheat Ridge residents, and then finally, the presence of strong performance metrics. So staff is requesting that council review these criteria and decide whether or not to retain them as is, or make any modifications, additions, or deletions to the criteria. All right, moving on to discuss some of the parameters that we'd like council to take a look at. So these may be rules that council could decide to implement or not. So the first one of these parameters we'd like council to review is around proxy organizations. And we'd like council to address whether multiple awards should go to organizations or projects that indirectly support the same overall organization. And the example that we have from two thousand and twenty four was we had multiple grants from high school affiliated groups. And we'd like to address whether or not we have any feelings about if we should create some rules around that or not. So the first option for council to consider is to do nothing, and the CPGP committee will continue to review each organization individually. Staff is recommending that we implement a disclosure requirement, which would ensure that the committee is informed of any affiliations between applicants and a primary organization. So in the case of our example, it would be like the instrumental band boosters. They would be informed that they're affiliated with the high school. So that would be disclosed to them when they're making their recommendations and reviewing those applications. And then alternatively, council could implement a primary applicant policy, which requires the primary organization to submit a single consolidated funding request on behalf of all affiliated groups or projects. The next parameter in that next area that we'd like council to address is overlapping organizations. We'd like council to evaluate whether organizations already receiving funds from the city Wheat Ridge should be eligible for this program. And the example that we point to is, in two thousand and twenty four, we gave an award to Jefferson County for mental health, and they already received funds from the city budget, although for other activities that weren't related to their grant program funded activities. So council's options here are to do nothing, and the committee will continue to review each organization individually. Again, as with the last one, staff is recommending a disclosure requirement whereby the committee would be informed of all funds that the city is providing to an organization when it applies, including the specific purposes of those funds. And finally, council could implement ineligibility, so they could say the organizations receiving funds from the city would be ineligible to apply for CPGP funds, even if the request is for different services. So that brings us to the end of the presentation. I'll briefly go over those recommendations one more time. So for our two-part review process, staff is recommending that council give us consensus to adopt that, where we have the smaller grants and the larger grants, and they are each reviewed a little bit differently to give us more time to focus on the larger ones. For the CPGP timeline, staff is recommending that council give us consensus to shift that timeline forward to more closely align with budget adoption. For the review of CPGP criteria, we don't have any recommendation there. We would just like council to affirm whether or not they feel like those criteria are still relevant, still aligned with council's priorities for the program. And then back to our parameters for proxy organizations. Staff is recommending that there be a disclosure requirement included so that the committee is aware whenever there's a organization, multiple organizations that are affiliated with a parent organization. And then for overlapping organizations, staff is recommending, again, a disclosure requirement so that the committee is aware whenever an applicant is already receiving funds from the city and what those funds they're receiving are for. So that's the end of my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have of our analysis from the meeting back over to the mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation, Cole. I personally am comfortable with the two-part review process. You guys are the ones who manage that. Your committee is the one who manages that. If you feel like that would be an effective way for you to manage your time, then I agree with that. The timeline, again, you guys are basically in control of that. And if you feel like you can effectively get it done, and actually it looks like it gives you more time, then I agree with that. As far as the criteria and the additional questions on the criteria, I just wanted to open up a conversation with my colleagues about that. There, so the two examples that were given, so let's start with Jefferson Center for Melhale. The family tree would probably be another one that falls in that. They do get like a pretty significant amount of funding through our general budget. And so I would, and I would also say I was on the, I'm on the Board of Directors for Porchlight Family Justice Center. And when our development committee came to me and said, do you think we should apply for this? I said, no, because of where we're, we already get some funding from them. So I think that I would be comfortable with saying for those types of asks of saying, you know, if you're already in our general budget, then this is not a place for you to come. Now, the high school is a hard one, and I understand that people go, oh, well, but the, you know, but the, the high school that, you know, let's see, that's one, two, three, four, four different approvals in the last one. But if you look at it, these are programs, A, that don't have money in the school budget to start with. So it's not that they are, that they have a budget that they get and that they're overworking their budget. It's a program they don't have a budget, a program with no budget. So like the STEM program, right, they have to do full fundraising for their program. Like the PTSA, they do different things at the school. They do, they do all of the, the kind of the student leadership stuff, the dances and that kind of stuff. You know, the, then there's the band, and it looks like the football team's on here. Again, those are all, so yes, the football team. The thing is, like some, like this year, they changed the helmet requirements. And so they had to replace every single helmet, which was about a six, I think like a sixty thousand dollar expense that was not in the athletic director's budget. So basically, all the football families had to go and, you know, try to fundraise for that. So I would caution us against saying, well, because you're from the school, because you have Wheat Ridge in front of your program, that we would say that they're capped or only one single person could do that, could come and apply. And, and other than that, I think this is really good recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm, did you have your hand up? You're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Cole. So some questions I have is on the, on the two thousand and twenty four budget. It looks like the, the max amount was, that was asked for was like twelve percent of the budget. And that was the two hundred four thousand dollar Jefferson County or Center. And then if we looked at the small Sony five hundred dollar, if that was something we were in favor of, that looks like it's about four percent of the budget. Is there, if you could help me understand, because I know this is probably complex, and I don't want to take up too much time, but is there, is there, like, when people are deciding how much money? Right now, there's no caps. They're, how are they coming up with these amounts?
Oh, well, it's really the individual strategy of the organization. So it's whatever they do, whatever they think is going to give them the best chance to get a good award. And so what I tell the organizations when they ask me that question, well, there's no cap to the program. You know, how much should I request? I tell them, you know, here was the median amount that people received last year to kind of give them an idea. And I tell them, here was the highest request, here was the lowest request. And then I let them know that, you know, sometimes there can be an advantage to, you know, asking for a larger request for many different things, because then the committee might review it, and then they might determine, well, you know, we're not going to give you the whole thing, but we'll, we'll give you more than you would have if you asked for a lower request. Other times, the requests can be really large, but the committee reviews the application and feels like the application really didn't support that. So they might end up with less than if they had asked for a smaller amount that was like more related to some tangible things that were more impactful. So it really just comes down to the individual situation of the application and whether or not they decide to ask for a larger or smaller request.
Do you feel that the committee is spending a lot of time, that they feel they're spending a lot of time trying to figure out how much money, like each one? Because where I'm leading with this is that if that's the case, then, you know, definitely the caps would help to start somewhere, and then I don't know if we'd want to be more specific as far as saying like, hey, we're going to have fifty percent of the entire budget as we go towards large, fifty percent goes to small, or some other portion, so you have a couple more guardrails. Or is it better just to leave it kind of wide open? Because some of these are just, you know, they're really, it looked like they're really big tickets that they're asking for, and then in the end, they're getting just really small. And so is it, is everybody happy, I guess, you know, the committee, the people that are applying for it? Or should we, or should we try to be more, I don't know if it's transparency, but trying to have some guardrails of saying like, you know, when you come in, we got a maximum fifty percent can be for large, and here's what that cap's going to be, you know? And then the committee would be like, okay, that's our starting point.
Yeah, it's certainly an interesting question. I think part of the reason why we saw so many large requests and then small awards is because we had a lot of new applicants. So they were somewhat kind of testing the waters. I'd be interested to see if we didn't implement an individual cap for each organization, a maximum that they could receive, if we would see some of those requests start to match the awards that they got. And I'd be interested to know if Mary Ann would give some historical information, and that's something that typically happens, is that we kind of see those requests naturally adhere to what their awards are over time.
Yeah, it's interesting. This past year was, I would say, the largest first-time applicant request that I had seen in my experience. And so typically, they had not been as large on the, for their first application, but they do typically right-size based on sort of the award that they get their first year.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Weep.
Thanks, and thanks for your presentation, Cole. I agree with my co-counsel, co-counselor, Counselor Hoppe, regarding everything, but I'd like to come back to the high school issue. I don't think there's a problem with disclosing that all of these are high school programs. Just because as a person who doesn't happen to have children, it, you know, all of the different things that are happening at the high school are just kind of a blur to me. So, so I don't think the disclosure that's being suggested will necessarily harm the, the high school. I don't know if we should put in an ineligible, thank you, ineligibility for that. But I do agree that organizations that are already getting money within the line items in the budget, I don't think they should be able to, to apply. So I'd like to do more than just a disclosure on that. I think it should be, and I'm not going to try and say it again, but I think you get what I mean. You know, thinking about what Counselor Ohm brought up, one thing I was thinking of in the criteria, and this is more, again, just a disclosure thing, is I know, having worked around grants at the university, understanding what the percentage of the ask is of the overall budget of the thing that you're trying to accomplish is really helpful, both for the people writing the grants and for the people trying to decide whether or not to, to award the grants. So that might be something that we want to consider either in putting out there as a criteria of such and such a percentage, or just as a disclosure. Because I think it's, it's nice to know, are we funding the whole program? Or are we just funding, you know, three helmets? So, so that would be my suggestion. So, so that would be my suggestion. And I would appreciate other counselors sort of speaking up on whether you think it's a criteria issue or a disclosure issue. I tend to think that the committee and staff do a great job of this. So, so I, I tend not to want to regulate more, but just, I think that disclosure might help with some of the decision-making of how to award and how much. Because of course, when there's free money, of course, you ask, you go big, right? Because the worst people are going to do is give you less. So I think that's pretty natural and certainly in grant writing. Thanks.
Yeah, if I could add on, so that is a question that is already included on the grant application as we ask them to tell us what percent of their overall budget they're requesting. And this year, we're adding, for the 2026 award cycle, we're adding another question that kind of gets to the heart of an issue that has been a concern of the committee for a while, which is if this is not funded through the committee, then what is the alternative? So specifically asking that question and asking them to tell us if they would get funds through their organization's budget, if they would try to fundraise through other avenues, or what, or if they would have to just reduce that service or eliminate it. That way, we have a better understanding of exactly what's at stake when we're approving or denying a grant.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I think I agree with most of the things that have been said. I, I agree with if you want to change the process and the timeline, I'm, I'm good with all of that. It seems to make a lot of sense. I, I like kind of the criteria the way it is right now, because I, I feel like it gives the committee some ways to, to score and, 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 you know, unfortunately, because there is a finite amount, they have to pick some winners and some losers. So I'm okay with that and I'm okay with some hurt feelings at the end of the day if, if they're doing it fairly and, and it's, it's all good there. I do think having a disclosure that all these groups are maybe a part of, you know, Wheat Ridge High School or whatever, but I don't think that that disclosure should work against them. Because, you know, anybody who's been to high school knows that there's very separate groups sometimes. And sometimes those football players and those band kids, they don't mix. Sometimes they do, but sometimes they don't. But that's very separate groups that, that, that we're, we're helping there. And to me, that's no different than giving money to the Kiwanis, the Rotary and the Optimists. It's just three different clubs, right? We're essentially, I know they do more, I'm not trying to offend anybody, but, but essentially, we're giving money to a club. And so, you know, the fact that they all go to Wheat Ridge High School doesn't, doesn't affect that in any way. So I, I think that that's a, a good thing. I am pretty good with all of it. I don't know that, I do actually think that people who are in the budget, I think that's city council's decision and staff's decision. I'm okay with them coming back and try to double dip, because now they're going to the community grant group and they're totally different criteria, totally different people making that decision. So if they want to go back for something else, I'm, I'm okay with that. And that's up to the, to the committee to decide and discuss. And, you know, looking at the grants for the last couple of years and for this year too, you know, some people came in and asked for $20,000, $30,000 and they were given one. So that's, that's up to the group, I think. And I think that's why we have them and why we kind of entrust that they're going to make that decision and then bring it to city council for the final decision. But I, I, I think that that part's not broken. And as I look at it, you know, it looks like they've tended to support more local, smaller groups and, and groups that, and they've kind of left the, the bigger fish to fend for themselves a little bit. If they had like a billion-dollar company behind them, they let them kind of figure that out. So I don't, I didn't think this program was really broken to start. So I'm okay with, with the recommendations as far as disclosure goes, but I wouldn't change anything else. So thank you.
Additional discussion on this item?
Excuse me, Mayor?
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Dozeman via Zoom has her hand up.
Okay. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you. I just had a quick question in regards to the criteria and whether the committee has given some sort of kind of matrix or score based on that criteria. I think we briefly discussed it in the last study session. And then I have a couple of comments after that.
So they do have a rubric that they do use to score each organization based on their application materials and based on their presentation. The rubric is based on the CPGP program criteria. So yes, yes, they do have that and use it. And that rubric is provided to the applicants, so they know exactly how they're being scored and evaluated ahead of time.
Okay, so there, if they serve a higher percentage of Wheat Ridge residents or the committee feels that their impact locally is more than others, then, then they kind of score based on that?
Correct.
Okay, awesome. Thank you for that clarification. And then I will have to say that I agree with Councilmember Stites on this matter. And I definitely am in favor of at minimum a disclosure statement. I kind of waffled back and forth about the overlapping organizations and whether if they're receiving funds from the general budget, whether they should be eligible to apply for this grant programming. But if we're going to add a disclosure, disclosure statement, I think I'd be more comfortable with them being able to come to council and ask for additional funding for certain projects if necessary. Because I know that, you know, with Jefferson Center for Mental Health specifically, they have tried to bolster a lot of their programming that's specific to Wheat Ridge. And so if the funding is going directly to that, I want the committee as well as council to be able to discern, you know, how much and whether we want to, to give them additional funding. I also liked Councilmember Ohm's suggestions on like 50/50 for small versus large. I kind of wanted to get some just clarification from staff on, on how that may be managed as far as like a percentage to each group. So if there would be like favoritism, not favoritism, but like favorability over the smaller asks and then additional, whatever's left over after those are granted, then, then possibly have that go to larger asks. And I, I don't necessarily feel like a cap. I, I liked, I liked the whole like right-size naturally comment by Mary Ann.
Is that it? Are you done, Councilor Hulte?
Yep.
Councilor Dozeman? Okay, I guess she's done. Councilor Snell?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a, a few words on this. I agree with my colleagues in that I, by and large, what you've got here, Cole, and thank you for this presentation, the recommendations I'm in favor of, certainly. And then to Councilmember Ohm's point, I also agree with the percentage for larger and smaller. I'm not going to say 50/50, but that is, that seems logical. But I do appreciate the, the smaller and larger groups so that they're able to sort of, I hate to use the word compete, but compete with their, you know, the same amount of, the, the groups asking for around the same amount of money. You don't have a tiny group competing with a, you know, a $25,000 ask or something like that. So I, I do agree with my colleagues on that too. And in favor of the disclosure as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, very good discussion on this and I, I think it's very timely, especially since we're in January and in the past, January has been when things opened. And it's good to know that with this change in, in sort of the timeline when things happen, also includes a, a mechanism for reducing the amount of work going into something like this. Because I, I respect the time and effort that the committee puts on this. The other thing on timing is I think it would probably, simply because it takes so long, you put an application in the beginning of the year and you don't, if you get approved, you don't see the money for a whole year. Being able to shorten that cycle up, I think helps tremendously. I wonder if it might have helped identify, there was one organization on here that is apparently closed the doors recently. And we did, we did approve some money for them. So I think timing is important on this and shortening the time cycle will help quite a bit. I've always believed that when you're talking about a budget, a fixed budget of amount of money that you're going to be contributing, it's, my preference is always more money to fewer organizations. And it just seems like it's, it has a bigger impact when you can provide a greater amount of money to, to an organization. And I also like the, the idea that among the, the things we will ask the nonprofits is the questions about their financial stability, their, where their money's coming from. And this is all things that nonprofits will, will have at their fingertips anyway. So I, I do, I support all of that. And I think that it's definitely heading in the, in the right direction. I don't see a correction or a change to the criteria. But I do have the things we've just discussed here on some of the other issues. Thanks.
Councilor Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cole, can you clarify for me? You had said in your presentation, I think somewhere in the memo, I just got my memo pieces mixed up though. You said that you were putting a certain percentage towards the smaller and a certain percentage towards the larger already, right? No.
No. So currently, we don't allocate a certain percentage for the smaller and a certain percent for the larger. If we implemented the two-part process, we would set aside an amount for the smaller grant requests. And staff's preference would be to allow staff and the committee to determine that based upon the applications that we receive. So it might actually change what that dollar amount is year to year. And we would use historical data to kind of try to set that number correctly so that we're giving out a consistent amount of funds and making sure that there's a consistent amount of funds available to those organizations.
So in essence, that, essence, that answers the question of, of doing the split, like getting the split to a percentage. You, you will be doing some sort of split.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And then I just wanted to ask council again for some clarification from what I heard said, and I just want to make sure I heard that right. I've been taking, taking notes. And, and I'm, I'm basically, half of us think that if you are in our general fund budget, you should not be able to apply for this. And I just want to point out that Family Tree asked for $5,900, they got $9,000. Jefferson Center for Mental Health asked for 10 and they got $12,800, which would be money. They already have money in our general fund budget. That amount of money would have been available for other people who are not in our general fund budget. So, so I had said that I am, I am not in favor, that you would not be eligible to apply for this if you're in a general budget. What I heard, Councilwoman Weaver and Councilmember Ohm agree with that. And then I, and then I heard that we, Jenny and Cory were okay with it, with them coming back. And I didn't hear what Dan had said about it.
No, I, yeah, I would, I would support you, Jenny, on that. I, I think that if you're, if you're receiving money from the general fund, then you probably should not be eligible.
So for a consensus, that puts us at like a 4-3. And so I just want to ask the other people if there's any, if there's anything that they would like to maybe bring up around, around that before I try to put together a consensus.
All right. Is there further discussion on this before we try to generate some consensus? Okay, well, the first one that I had on my list here is the consensus to adopt staff's recommendation on a two-part review process. Do we have consensus on that? Okay. I'm going to have to rely on someone else to tally Councilor Dozeman's response on this.
Mark, did she ever hand up a medal? Is she gone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Then we had another question on consensus to adopt the timeline shift to closer to align to the budget. Do we have consensus on that? Okay.
Dozeman says yes.
Okay. On the criteria, do we have any changes that we're looking to adopt into the criteria? Or, Councilor Hoppe?
I'd like to ask for a consensus to carry forward with the criteria, but also adding that you're ineligible to apply for the CPGP funds if you are already in the general fund for the city of Wheat Ridge.
Do we have consensus on that? And how about Councilor Dozeman?
Councilor Dozeman says no.
Okay, so we, we barely have, we barely have.
We had two noes.
We barely have consensus on that, so that, that passes. And how about the rest of the criteria? Is there any, any, we have consensus on the criteria other than that? Do? Okay. Is that it?
Sorry, sorry, Mayor. So would that include the disclosure statements?
Yeah, so I think the one thing that we haven't heard on is the disclosure statement for the proxy organizations and if there's consensus to include that.
Okay, we have consensus to do the closure statement. I don't have that in my, in my paper here. Okay. So we have consensus on that. Does that conclude all the information that you need relative to this discussion?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate. What's that?
Thanks, Cole.
Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you. Our next agenda item is number two. This is a, an overview of the 2025 Capital Improvement Program.
Thank you, Mayor. We are excited this evening. We have Maria, our Public Works Director, but she has our CIP team here in the audience, which we'll introduce you to in a minute. But excited to give you a summary of what our plan is for 2025 with all of our different CIP funding. As you know, we have a lot of, of funding available for, for projects and we are getting much more organized than we have in the past. And, and we're going to talk to you about that this evening. You good, Maria?
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you. Just getting this set up here. There we go. Thank you. Yeah, just very briefly tonight, this is just an informational item. It was probably a little over a year ago that we modified a little bit some of the internal organization within the city and brought all aspects of CIP within Public Works. So we also at that time brought a couple of folks over from engineering to help with that project management. And since then, we've had some staff changeovers. So we want to introduce those folks to you tonight and give you just a very brief update on where things stand in terms of our various projects. So our focus has been with that effort is really to streamline our processes and focus those staff on CIP, not doing anything else necessarily. As you know, we have a very aggressive program. And we want to come out with a very, really improve our ways of delivering our, our projects, ways we do business and overall deliver projects on time, on budget, with a high level of quality. So with that, I'd like to introduce you to our CIP Program Manager, Kent Kisselman here. And he'll speak to each of the projects. Then we have our two project managers, Dan Klendowski and Daniel Martinez. So Dan and Daniel. And we also have two existing staff, Tom Gray, who's our longtime engineering technician, as well as our administrative assistant, Carrie Strong. We are certainly, are, we're certainly currently trying to hire for a couple of open positions as well. So this is the team that's delivering all of this work, along with help from me as well and when I have time. But with that, I'd like to introduce Kent and have him come up and talk briefly to each of the projects.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us this evening. So everybody can see the map up here, and if you have it, I'm just going to touch briefly on the bullet points.
for the 2J funding. And with that, we'll be hiring a consultant to complete those studies this year. The number two is the Clear Creek Bus Terminal. Currently, we're in the design phase on that, a little over 30%, and we should be getting that to construction later this year. Number three is the Youngfield Scour Project. That is scheduled to start on January 20th and be completed in about three weeks. Number five is the 37th Avenue Bike Lanes. That project is currently in CDOT final review, and once we receive those final comments from from CDOT, then we'll be able to put that out to bid. And that one is the that's a Dr. Cog project as well. Number six is the Ward Station Pedestrian Bridge and Trail Improvements. We're in the final design for that. We have a big meeting coming up with RTD, and and we're looking at getting that out to bid in some effort in mid midsummer. Number eight is the 38th West Project. So that is going to be you had the big study. We're going to come back later this quarter and do the presentation on the final study findings. And right now, we're working with the design consultant, airs the same people who did the study on a design contract for 2025. And that design is going to take about a year to do since it's a pretty large project. The Rex Center Culvert Repair, that project is currently out for bid, and bids are due on January 16th. And as soon as we get those bids back, we'll be trying to get that executed. That'll need to be done before water starts back up in April, so we'll get that completed. Number 10 is Wadsworth, I'm pretty kind of familiar with that one. The large the large lines portion of that project is nearly complete now. So the focus this year is going to be streetlights, landscaping, medians, and that that those sort of things, cleanup areas. So it should be mostly done by the end of 2025, and then we'll have some punchless items that means they go into 2026. Number 11 is the Wadsworth Path. That is the next section from 32nd to 35th. And currently, we're in the design phase. We're getting ready to submit that to CDOT for their they call it FIR. We call it it's around 30%. So that that's going to be bid to for construction by October of this year. Number 12 is the 38th Avenue Refresh, and that's also part of the 2J funding. And that is going to be pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalk, traffic signal upgrades and streetlighting. So a very large project. We'll be looking for consulting services for that this year to get that design started as well. Other items not listed on here or not shown on a map on a with a dot or the, you know, the stormwater, Maria's presented on that recently. The sewer repairs, pavement management, sidewalk repairs. So those are all things that we're continuing to work on. The next presentation that Maria is going to present is really a great program that we just got, and you're going to see how it's really going to take us to the next level on our pavement management and software of how we choose our streets. If I didn't say anything, that hatched area is Zone 2, so that's our focus. Maria's presented to you focused areas 1 through 6. In 2024 was Zone 1, and 2025 is Zone 2. So currently, we're out with some support staff doing individual sidewalk inspections. We've built a program where we can go out and individualize that, store that in the iPad, get that as a GPS point, manage it into our system to better track the deficiencies in the sidewalks. So lots of improvements to the program, as Maria mentioned. You know, these projects total a little over $33 million, and as Maria mentioned, we have three staff members currently. So big effort, big lift, but you know, we've our team, we've worked together for over 10 years together, and so we're very familiar with ourselves with our process and and streamlining things. So we're looking forward to the challenge and and getting a couple more folks on board as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, go to questions. Mrs. Segley. Counselor Hoppe.
Hi, welcome to the team. Thank you for being here tonight. So in number 12, it says the 38th Avenue Refresh Harland to Pierce. It was my understanding, and maybe it's not a part of the of this focus now, but I thought we were going to look at doing some kind of piecemeal pieces from Pierce towards Wadsworth Uppam area. Is that still on the books?
In the April 15th memo, I'm sorry, we just had an error. I think it the 38th Refresh goes from Wadsworth to Harland.
Thank you.
Additional discussion on this segment? Mayor Pro Tim Stites. I just want to give you guys a quick shout out to the sidewalk repair process you have now. District 3, which I think was Zone 1, looks completely different. And as you're trying to walk around, especially in the Applewood area, kind of by the shopping center and all that stuff over there, it's completely different now, much easier to get around biking, walking, rolling, all that stuff. So thank you for that. Counselor Weaver.
Welcome, welcome, everyone. I also just want to thank Maria and her team for dealing with things until we can get things fixed. So I had a flooding issue over the holidays, and and it was really helpful. It was cleared up by the next day. So thank you for addressing all of those immediate needs as well.
Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. In in looking over the the budget document for this year, there are two pages, Pages 210 and 211, where these are under the 2J Next Chapter Fund, and the profiles, one's for corridor, one for sidewalk and bicycle bicycle facilities. But under corridors, it describes improvements, including road maintenance, improved pedestrian and bicycle facilities, aesthetic improvements. Is there is there an overlap between what we see under corridors and the separate page for bicycle and sidewalks?
Yes, so the corridor projects would specifically that are identified for 2025 would be the 38th Refresh, so number 12 up there, and then also the 38th Avenue West Project between Youngfield and Kipling. The sidewalk projects, we're while we're hoping to start some of that work for the gap closures, most likely all the ability that we'll be able to do is the sidewalk maintenance this year. So the gap construction likely won't start until 2026.
So then, most of the the funding we've allocated for 25 sidewalks and bike facilities are improvements or are these new developments?
I would say they're more maintenance of our existing infrastructure.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on this this presentation? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Consensus, consensus. That's okay, Mayor? We'll transition into the next next item on the agenda, if you're okay with that. So as you may recall, every other year, the city undertakes a survey with the public to assess various aspects. And one of the items that has been asked consistently is what citizens feel is the condition of our street network. And 2023, we saw one of the lowest ratings overall at about 38%, where just 38% of those polled indicated that our street network was either in a good or excellent condition, and one of the lowest ratings that we've received. Well, that is a qualitative rating by citizens, probably of the street network that they see the most. Staff wanted to undertake a quantitative assessment of our street network to really get a rating and specific data on how good is our street network in relation overall. So what we've done this year, we had budgeted, was to look at or send a company out, actually rate all of our street segments, typically from intersection to intersection, and we give a rating to that from zero, which is the worst, all the way up to 100, which is the best, and then get an overall condition for the entire city. So what this will do, as Kent mentioned earlier, was that it will help us then inform how we do our pavement management, which streets we select, and then actually which types of treatments we're going to apply to those in that six-year rotation. So that's a little bit of background there, and we'll go through some of this in more detail. So overall, we have just over 130 miles of streets, as you can see, broken down there. Arterials are the busiest or the most volatile highest traffic volumes. So those would be roads like 44th Avenue, 38th Avenue, things like that. Collectors are those more kind of in-between roads, if you will. So things like Pierce, Harland would fall into that collector category. You can see we have about roughly seven miles of those. Collectors are also those I-70 frontage roads that were required to maintain. And then the vast majority there, about 112 miles, is our local and residential streets. So very typical of what everyone lives on and really make up the vast majority of our streets. This is just a map that you've seen before of our overall street network. And again, you can see those highlighted in there, some of those different street types. For example, 32nd Avenue is shown there as being a minor arterial, but still an arterial all the way across from end to end. 44th Avenue similarly is shown in that pink over here as a minor arterial. So again, we wanted to look at a rating from 0 to 100. This is a nationwide national system that's used. It was originally developed by the Army Corps of Engineers and has since been more formally regulated through an ASTM process so that you get consistency not only between communities, but from segment to segment. And that Pavement Condition Index, or PCI, is really a numerical scale used to evaluate the condition of the pavement surfaces. Again, where 0 is a failed street all the way up to 100, or a perfect surface, or probably just a re repaved surface. So that again, that helps engineers and managers of payments assess that current state of the pavement and determine maintenance needs and prioritize where we put our dollars. This is a picture of the vehicle that actually collected our data. So you can see up in the top there, similar to like the Google vehicles that you've seen that go drive down the street. This is collecting that data on the top of the this car here. It feeds back into a computerized network, and then they were able to provide us with this data by street segment. Again, we're going typically from intersection to intersection, and we're looking at specifically what are the distresses? So not just, you know, is this pavement good or not, kind of a thumbs up, thumbs down, but actually measuring the severity and the extent of things like cracks across the pavement. You can things like alligator cracking. We'll see some examples of this in a minute. And all of that gets fed back into a a calculation that gives us that score between 0 and 100. So overall, you can see there, our network OCI or PCI is 66, which isn't bad. So if we go back up to that scale, 66 falls right in that kind of the higher end of the fair category. So between 70 and 56 is fair. So but what that tells us, if we go back to that scale, is that we have a lot of roads in in fair condition, and then a fair amount between to the right there, 71 to 86 is good, 86 to 100 is excellent. We tend to be on that higher end of the spectrum. The issue is, as I see it, is that if we don't invest monies, this chart will tend to move to the left, and all of a sudden, we're going to have more and more of those roads falling from fair into poor condition and from good down into fair. And what happens then is that then it costs it becomes much more costly to fix those roads when they're in poor condition rather than keeping them in good condition at the higher end. This is just a little bit of a different breakdown by each of those categories. So you can see there, starting from the dark green, which is excellent, then moving around to the right around the circle, the kind of lighter green being good, the yellow being fair, that light orange being poor, and then the very poor. So we have no roads that are below 25. We do have a little bit there, about 3% of the system, that's between a 40 and a 26. And you'll see that in a map here in the in the in a moment. But overall, generally, again, very good. Again, just a different way of showing that previous bar chart. But that yellow is that the ones that we want to catch, and we want to try and bring some of these up into a good condition before we lose them, if you will, and that they all fall down into that lighter orange category. So this shows this map shows overall are those excellent streets, and you can see it's it's pretty varied, but it is in line with some of the things that we've done. So recently, we just paved or graded or reconstructed, I should say, 52nd Avenue between Ward and Tabor and then down Tabor. A lot of these streets are newer up here because that is that newer area of town. This also aligns with a lot of the other work we've done, for example, on Harland over here, Pierce as well. We've done some relatively recent projects to mill and overlay. Clear Creek is still certainly new, and those ratings reflect that. There are a couple roads in here that we inadvertently collected. So as you know, Lutheran Parkway is a private street, but we did collect it. So we have excluded that from our overall rating. But there are a few of those that we caught in there that we have taken them out. So the score does not reflect those private streets, but they do show up in the map still. This is just an example. I believe this is Harland, which was repaved, I believe, in 2024. So just an example of a really nice newly paved street. You know, we do when there is curb and gutter, it's nice, it's easier to get that good edge where we don't have the failing pavement edge or the cracking. When we don't have curb and gutter, then you have a lot of the water sitting at the curb edge and tends to break the asphalt up over time due to that freeze-thaw cycle and/or heavy vehicles driving over it time and again. But just an example of a great street in town here. Then we move into the bid rating. Now you see more green popping up, which again, is still a great rating, but a little bit less of a overall rating than the previous ones. And you can see here, again, a lot of the streets that we've done probably in the last four to six years, repaving up here, some of the other streets that we've done, 32nd Avenue falls into that category of those next level of streets. And here's an example. You're starting to see there, it might be a little difficult to see from afar, but we have one longitudinal crack coming down the center line of the street, and then right in kind of in the foreground here, we do have one lateral crack. So you're starting at that point to start to see some of those either cracks reflecting up through the from the subbase, for whatever reason, there may be utilities underneath there, things like that, or just over time, you see that deflection in the asphalt pavement due to time and wear. Then again, this is the fair rating. So again, you see much more heavier network of street overall. And the interesting thing about all of these, I think, is that it's fairly well distributed across the entire town. There's not one particular area that's at the excellent, while the other is at the poor. They really do show kind of a homogeneous mix across the entire city of all those streets. And again, these are the ones that we really want to focus on to make sure we keep those in as good a condition as possible. And if if like possibly even bring them up to a higher level. Here you can see what is typical. A little bit, so we see more cracking as well as. A little bit, so we see more cracking as well as starting to see some probably utility cuts in the pavement across here. People have come in and dug, for whatever reason, to do underground utility repairs. Here's some longitudinal cracks likely in the tire lanes on either side. So you're starting to see more of that condition occurring in the pavement. And this is poor. So again, kind of spread mostly across, generally across various areas of town, seeing a few more down here in this little neighborhood, as well as kind of maybe a little bit more up in the northeast corner of town, a few streets over here, and then kind of throughout the rest of the community. And this probably shows up a little bit more. This is what we call block cracking. Again, typically, that's being caused by heavy vehicles going over and over, over time, creating that block cracking. It looks like we have come back and done some crack sealing of those, but it's really not enough to address the wear that's occurring and the deformation that's probably occurring underneath the pavement. You can also see some cracking down here that hasn't been filled with cracks and something going along, along the curb line here as well. And then finally, with that very poor, again, we don't have anything that's less than a 26 in town, but you can see here, streets that are popping up. We know that this, this little curvy road around here, I forget the name of that one, but it's a little bit hit or miss. Again, this is part of Lutheran Parkway that would not be considered part of that because it is a private road. And then really just little pockets, I would say, here and there across town that we would like to address. All right, and here's a picture of that. It's a little bit dark, but you can see just a significant amount more of deformation over here, significant alligator cracking, some bigger cracks occurring longitudinally across the pavement, and then more damage and wear along that edge as well. So with that, the program that we use, which is called Street Logix, used this data and estimated what it would take for us to repair all the streets where that PCI is 55 or less. So that's, represents the orange and the red on these maps. So all of the red and all of this orange, so the poor and the very poor. And they're estimating that cost, which most likely that would require a pretty significant, what we call mill and overlay, so removing almost three to probably four inches of asphalt and replacing that with new asphalt. That would cost about $18.8 million. Instead, what we're doing is, some of those streets, now people might argue how bad those look, you know, but they're still drivable. They're still in relatively good condition. So we don't feel that we need to invest all of that money immediately. Instead, we're thinking of doing this over time, where we do it on a rational basis around town. And again, if we spent 18 million on just the very low end of the spectrum, then we're not capturing or taking care of those fair and good-conditioned streets at the higher end. So we still want to put some of our money into those streets as well. So what we're proposing is that we try and keep the overall PCI around 65. Again, we're at 66 currently, and that that would take approximately $3 million annually to try and maintain it at that level. If we wanted it, if council had a desire to go higher, let's say a 70 overall, then of course, we would have to put in more money to achieve that higher PCI. So overall, our philosophy is pretty simple, completing the right repair on the right road at the right time. And what does that mean? It's really about, so in a road that is in that poorer end of the spectrum, that it's going to take more than just a slurry seal to address that. So topping that over, you've seen us do that slurry seal before, it's kind of a, a very thin asphalt overlay. It's not even an overlay, I shouldn't use that word, but it's basically a spray coating. And we do that on the higher-end streets, probably in the 70 to 85 area streets, to seal out some of those smaller cracks. If we do slurry seal on a lower-rated road, let's say 60 or under, it's really not helping us increase that PCI on that street segment. It's really, truly just a waste of money because we're not addressing the underlying issues that are going on that are causing that pavement to have deteriorated to that point. So to that effect, it's again, spending the right, putting the right treatment on the right road at the right time. And what this graph shows is that you can go one of two ways, and the red shows if we were to wait, so if the, the typical 20-year life of a street is that if you wait and do nothing, you go from 100, let's say it's a new pavement, you wait 20 years, you do absolutely nothing to it, then you have to reconstruct and do that cycle over and over again. The difference being is that you're living with much lower PCI level, if that's what's on the horizontal, or excuse me, the vertical chart here, is that you're living with lower PCIs over that period of time. Instead, the blue is that we're doing preventative maintenance periodically on those streets to keep them at a higher level for a longer period of time before ultimately it gets to such a point that we have to do a full reconstruction to bring it back up again. So the blue approach is what many cities propose, is that putting smaller amounts of dollars, keeping that PCI overall in a higher level between more in that 50 to 90 range. We can extend the life of the roadway and put less money into it than doing multiple So with that, we have various types of maintenance that we do. So routine maintenance is things that we typically do in-house with our staff. So that's filling potholes, doing, we do, do some crack sealing. We also will remove and replace smaller sections of poor pavement. And we do that on a regular basis, but also that tends to be reactive. So something bubbles up and, literally, or we're replacing, doing some repair work, that's because we've identified an actual issue on the pavement. So instead, the preventative and corrective to their, as they say, is really preventative is about trying to get out in front of that and do something before it becomes worse. And you don't necessarily, you're like, hey, this looks pretty good. Instead, we're trying to do that treatment, like a slurry seal, to seal that roadway from the elements before it becomes worse. And then corrective maintenance is more on that end of doing that mill and overlay, things where it's gotten so bad that we do need to do more costly and more intensive repair. And our intent is to do for the local and collector streets that we do this on the six-year cycle. And then we have a separate multi-year plan for arterial streets, typically because they involve higher volumes of traffic, different types of traffic control, and typically tend to be more expensive because there are multiple lanes. I'm just going to jump ahead here. Again, this, we're our six improvement zones. We've shown this before. These are also the zones that we're following for the concrete maintenance. So we, as you know, we were in zone one last year for all the concrete work. We'll start there this year with the pavement management and basically trail the concrete work by one year. That way, we don't have those competing contractors fighting with each other on the same roads, but we're doing this systematically. The great thing about this is if I have somebody call who lives, let's say, up at 45th and Way, we can say, you're in zone four, we're going to be to you in 2027. So it might not be like, hey, we're not going to be there next year, but at least they realize that we have a plan, that we're, we're, you're on the schedule, we're going to come out and take a look at it. If we do need to do some routine maintenance to get by for a couple of years, we can certainly do that, but at least there's a system and a process that we can explain to people when they do call us up. So these other slides just talked about what is that corrective maintenance, what does that entail, and some of the treatments that we go through that could fall into those different categories. Preventative maintenance, again, we want to apply those to pavements where in their, they're in that good to fair condition to keep them at or move them even up a little bit in that PCI rating. So this again shows our cycle. So corrective, we would start in zone one this year, and that's the more intensive, so the mill and overlay, the full-depth reclamation, that sort of thing, and then just move through the, the six zones as we move forward. So this will, will address all of those red and the orange ones, as well as try and address some of the fair, if they do need more of that corrective action. Then we'll start in zone five, going back to my map, in 2025 with the preventative. So that'd be more of the slurry seal, that sort of thing. So zone one and zone five is what we do in 2025, and then just move on a regular basis throughout town. And then those busier arterial roads like 44th, 38th, if we're not addressing them through these larger projects, then we will do that pavement management on a separate cycle as we see fit. So for example, 44th Avenue, kind of between west of Kipling and between Ward and Kipling, there are some pavement sections that need some serious work. There are more than what we can do with pothole filling and work that we can do in-house. So we'll probably have to address part of 44th through this program, but that would fall outside of, of the six zones, if that makes sense. So again, in this system and program, the work is concentrated in zones. It goes on a cycle around the city. And then routine maintenance, that work that we primarily do in-house, really can occur anywhere throughout the city, any, at any time of the year. And just to be clear, not every street within that zone receives a treatment. It just allows us to focus those dollars and our work within that particular zone in a given year. This shows our current funding that's in our long-term CIP, and you can see all of that right now is from our IIJ fund. So we did set aside within the IIJ money for pavement management. We had anticipated, originally that was being taken out of CIP. We did anticipate putting more money in from pavement management through IIJ, but have had to back out some of those CIP, CIP funds because of other priorities. So this represents what's currently in the budget, not only for 2025, but also our long-term plan at this time for our needs. So you can see there, if we need about $3 million, we're good for 2025. We'll need to identify, to stay on track, another million in '26, hopefully. And maybe in the future years, we can move that back up again as more funds come into CIP. And this speaks to our, our efforts as staff that was, we heard that back from council at the budget discussion, is looking at that long-term infrastructure investment and how do we identify funds so that we can maintain our assets as needed with adequate funding. So a big part of this is coordinating with other entities. The worst thing in the world is that we come in, we've got a great system, we pave a street, and Excel Energy comes behind us two months later and cuts it all wide open. That doesn't look good for them, that doesn't look good for us. So our effort is really about how do we coordinate better with other entities, whether dry utilities, as I show there, Excel, CenturyLink, we've got Google Fiber coming in right now, also our wet utilities, so all of the water and sand districts, seven, I believe it's seven water and, or excuse me, seven sanitation, six water districts, 13 separate entities that we need to coordinate with. We know that we've got those city stormwater repairs at different locations around the city. And then finally, we've talked about before, Denver Water is doing their lead service line replacement primarily on the eastern ed- edge of town. But all of those people, we want to reach out to, get their capital programs, and really work with them so that we're not working against each other. And hopefully incentivize them to some point. I met with Wheat Ridge Water District, maybe a couple of months ago, and if we can incentivize them by them doing their work, let's say, a year ahead of us in a particular area, then maybe they don't need to do as much pavement restoration because we're coming behind them in a year. We can do something temporary, but then we come in and do the full, what I call the icing on the cake, once everybody underneath is done with their work. So hopefully save them some money, save them time, and that we look to the public like we're, know what we're doing, to some extent. And that's some of the, really, the, a lot of the benefits there comes from addressing those streets before they become so deteriorated that they require those more costly repairs. Again, putting those into those lesser costly activities like slurry seal, like crack sealing, so we can save those streets that are in good or fair condition as long as possible and extend their service life. So it really becomes a more cost-effective use of our funds rather than trying to address the worst-first approach. But that still means that we're addressing some of those poor and very poor. We can't let them go any longer, but we're going to take that on a systematic basis to figure those out. This also allows us to improve communications with the public, as I mentioned, not only responding to calls, but also if we're out in zone one, we can target that neighborhood pretty easily, show on a map, hey, if you're east of Kipling, north of 26th, south of 38th, you're in zone three, we're going to take care of you in this particular year. We're doing mailings in a solid area instead of here, there, everywhere. And then, like I mentioned, coordination with both public and private utilities, and really improving that planning out into the long run. Some people will call us and say, hey, you know, I need to get my sanitary sewer line repaired. When should I do that? We always say as soon as possible so that you're done before we come in. But being able to answer questions from the public is really, really critical and helps them make decisions about their investment in their property as well. And overall, hopefully, better and lower mobilization costs as a result of working in a concentrated area. So instead of moving their equipment from here to there to everywhere, it's working within a relatively limited area and makes them, help them be as efficient as possible. So with that, happy to answer any questions or discussions. I will mention, we did receive feedback today from the Ad-Eds of comments to our presentation tonight, and they would, were asking specifically that the city consider, as we go through this process each year, that we look at the, both the bicycle and, bicycle master plan, as well as our IIJ projects, to see where those integrate and align as well. So if there's a need, let's say the bicycle master plan calls out a bike lane on a particular street, that we would look at this as an ideal time to implement that striping, which I think is a great idea. So with that, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Great presentation there. We're going to start with Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Director Deandra. First off, fantastic presentation, really impressed with all the data and this, the street scan. It sounds really interesting, and so a lot, a lot of thought has gone through it. Appreciate the coordination. A couple of questions I have is, one, does a city currently have like a one or two moratorium on new asphalt, like cutting it, like Manitou Springs, Colorado Springs do?
Yes. So if you recall, just within the last couple of months, we've upgraded those licensing and permitting within the public right-of-way. So there was that two-year moratorium on there. It just really hasn't been enforced to a great deal. So part of this is putting, part of that ordinance change and those code length, code modifications that we put in place is also making an improvement to how we repair the street when somebody, let's say, comes in and does a trench to install a new gas line or replaces their sanitary sewer line. The repair that's going to take place is much more robust, and to your point, is if somebody comes in and, in an emergency, if they have to cut into the street, they're going to do a much larger portion of the street repair than just where they're actually digging. So it will be just stronger enforcement going forward.
And then you said something about the Wheat Ridge Water District. Are you going to, planning on talking to like the, the other sanitation districts, other local water purveyors in the city?
Yes. I haven't, haven't reached out to them yet.
Okay.
But yes, we would plan to share this program and our specific streets with each of those entities, and again, try and coordinate our CIPs as much as possible.
I think that, yeah, I think that'd be really advantageous. And then, I don't know how, how we would do this, but I really do think there's got to be some way that we could be transparent and also educate the public on, on the cost. Because like when you, you know, if you were to ask me like, how much does it cost to do your block? It's like, I don't know the answer. And if there's some way that we could, you know, that would be easy for you, but whether it's a linear foot or something, if it was on the web, just as you're doing this, so people, people see, you know, they, they see what's getting done, but then they also understand like, oh, that costs X amount of dollars. So then when we ask the public like, hey, you know, we need more money to do this, they, it's not like, whoa, that's way too much. At least they have a little bit of a, you know, kind of a gut check on what that actually costs. And so if that, that's just- And so if that, that's just a, you know, an ask, and I don't know if that's, if that's something that's even possible, but, but just, just to kind of get the public to understand, we need to get this stuff done, and this is how much it costs.
That's certainly doable. So let's say a typical block is 660 feet.
Yeah.
Typically between intersections. We, and typically 30 feet wide or 30 feet of pavement. We could certainly come up with a cost for that, so that give people an idea, oh my gosh, that's, yeah. And it does get to be very costly for just one block like that.
Yeah.
When you put it in those types of dollars.
And then, and then the last question I have, can that street scan vehicle technology be used to assess sidewalks?
Yes, and we actually talked to them about getting a price. Have you guys done that before? Did you do sidewalks? No?
We didn't do sidewalks.
Kent, do you want to come to the microphone?
So previously, when we viewed, we've looked at the sidewalks, it's, it's really costly. They do go out and do a 3D scan and imaging of the entire road. So they pick up street signs, and they pick up the sidewalks and those things, and those are just extra costs. We found it more beneficial to kind of, again, build this program that we talked about earlier in the GIS or GPS and using iPads and getting out on the street and, and hiring like an engineering intern. And I know that we can't do that in 2025, but, you know, for 2026, having that college-type student that can come in and in their summer, they can learn engineering skill, and then they can go out and do that task, task for us. We want to, the PCI is done every three years. That's what's mandated by the, by the state. So we don't do this Street Logics every three years. So we want to kind of do the sidewalks the same way. We want to cover our zone in one season, and then go to the next zone, and then we want to drop back every three years and check and see where our progress is. So personally, I don't know that it's worth the investment into the Street Logics portion of the sidewalk portion, because we can do it ourselves.
Okay, thank you.
This year, we're actually using our engineering technician and two of our street maintenance techs to actually walk each of the sidewalks in Zone 2. We may go into Zone 3, too, if we have time. So when they have some downtime in the winter like this, we're not plowing or doing other activities, we put those staff to use doing this. So actually eyes on the ground, measuring the deviations, the displacements for trip hazards, which is, as Mayor Potemstites mentioned, resulted in what we did this year in Zone 1.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. So you had shown us a slide that you said was from large, heavy trucks going down the road. Do we have any like weight limit signs on our streets? Is that something that we would have to codify and put signage up, or?
I'd have to look into that. I know we, we have, there are bridges, there's a couple of bridges that are load limited. I don't know that we have that on any streets. Technically, we should be doing most streets for a typical load. I think it's that repeated load, like garbage trucks, that tends to break down and wear down a street. So they're technically, they're, they're sufficient to carry a garbage truck, but it's the repeated wear that causes the damage that we see. But I'll have to look into the whole, how you rate it for a load, if you will.
Okay. And then, when, when we milled and repaved Teller Street from 38th to, I think we went to 33rd, maybe. It was a couple of years ago. But there were, there's several driveways on, on Teller, and we had a lot, it was, it was before you were here. We had, I had a lot of community members contacting me because what happened is when the, when the new street got put up, it was a couple inches higher than their driveway. So it was, and they were ending up with like pooling up their, up their driveways. So I'm just wondering if there is, you know, I went out and walked Teller and measured places and took pictures and sent them in, but just wondering if there's like a hotline, if we will be able to have a hotline or something where we can tell them, please call this hotline and let them know that the, the way that it is, that your driveway is coming into now the street is, you know, is causing a hazard.
Absolutely. So I think, again, part of that process of improving how we do things overall is making sure that there's relatively seamless transition there. So that should not be occurring. You know, we should be either leveling that out on the street, or feathering that back up into the driveway a little bit, one or the other, so that there's a much smoother transition there. But yes, we do have both a projects email that we monitor, as well as our phone numbers that we put out there for, like a project hotline.
Well, and you'd said that you were going to be notifying people, too. So maybe that could be on part of the notification is?
Certainly.
Call, call here. Yeah. Yeah, because they did, they had to go back and redo the work on those driveways, and I know that that's expensive, but one of them was like the width of my cellphone high on the driveway was pretty bad.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
Thanks, thanks for the presentation. I really very much appreciate that we have some sort of plan, and, and I would love to find a way, sort of like the, the how much it costs per, per square foot, but to have those answers for people that we do have a plan, because I think that's, that's some of the most often questions I get. If it's not an emergency, then when is this going to be dealt with? And, and I also think that, and this is sort of, this is going to come back to Mr. Goff, I also think we should consider tree plan, just to come back to a conversation.
Tree, tree?
A tree plan, as we, as we're dealing with some of these streets, and, and just in thinking about how, however we sort of, not advertise, but let people know, not just one by one via constituents, but if there's something we can put on the website about the fact that you can call in and find out when your, your street is going to be dealt with. I just think, and I, and I guess I'd, I'd love some ideas from you, just sort of that cohesiveness of not only thinking about bike lanes and doing this all together, but also the, some of the tree canopy stuff we've been talking about, about street trees. Sorry, those weren't really questions and statements, and I just want us to think about the whole streetscape plan as we go forward, and just some thoughts. So thank you very much, and thanks for letting me bring that up. Is that something I need to bring up as a separate agenda? I think we talked about it at one point.
It's on the future agenda to look at tree canopy in general.
Okay, okay.
So this will be part of it. I think this is an interesting aspect of looking at complete streets. But, you know, we could look at tree canopy separately from the street program as well.
Yeah, no, just sort of like, while we're here, just, we should think about that. Thanks.
Mayor Potemstites.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and great presentation. Is the map and all that, is that going up on the website at all, or is that publicly accessible?
Yeah, I think to Councilmember Weaver's point, is there a way that we can maybe condense this, add this information to the city website, and then maybe do some articles either in connections, or work with Guy for the Gazette, to start to spread that and point them to the website so that they can see these maps. Street Logics does have the ability where we could make that portal public, where you could type in your address and actually look at what the rating is on your specific street. We haven't talked about that, opening that up at this point, but that is something we can do. So you could type in your address and say, oh, I'm a 56, yay, you know? And then show you what zone you're in, and how quickly we would be getting to you, and what a 56 might entail in terms of repair. So you might look at that for implementation. Some of that brings with it some, a lot of questions then from the public, like, I'm a 56, I need, or you know, I think it's a 32, and I need it sooner rather than 2027. So it's some of that, too, that we would have to think through before we open that up, but yeah.
Yeah, there might be more.
Sorry, long answer.
No, that's a, that's a good answer. Yeah, I don't know that we need to go that far, but just so, if somebody looks on a map or they're looking, hey, when is my street going to be done? Or does we even have a plan?
Yeah.
Because the fact that this is the first time we're having a plan, I think, probably says that there hasn't been a real plan, and we're probably not the only city that can have a real plan. So it's nice to have that, and it's nice that you're thinking about working with all of the other organizations to make sure that this is all, I think our, our constituents will really appreciate that, because nothing is more frustrating than watching the city go out and redo it, and then watching Excel come in and trench it up and mess it all up. So thank you for this, this is fantastic.
Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor, and Maria, if you, if you wouldn't help me understand a little bit the, the way we've got funding for this set up. On your slide, project management funding, it goes from '25 all the way through 2030, and the, that draws funds from 2J. Help me understand how we can go from $3 million in 2025 and, and $1 million in 2030, when we think about inflation, the cost of everything getting more expensive, but we would be spending less money on street maintenance?
Yes. So the intent was that, as you may recall from our budget discussions, it's a lean year right now, and I'll let Patrick chime in, too, if he wants to add to this. So we've had to back off funds from our CIP. Our original intent was to supplement our CIP funds for pavement management with additional pavement management, or 2J funding. So CIP plus 2J. Now we're down to just 2J funding. The intent was that over time, we would wean ourselves off of the 2J, and that we would come back up, there'd be more funds in CIP available for pavement management, so it would offset the need for more 2J. But I'll let Patrick add in anything else.
Yeah, that's essentially it. So we do have money in the out years in both 2J and the, and the CIP budget for preventative maintenance.
So the net would, would pretty much zero out, then?
Yeah, it adds up. But yes, Maria said, the first two years, it's, we're counting on the 2J budget to take care of pavement management, $3,000 this year, $2,000 next year, but then when we get into '27, we have $2,000 in 2J and $2,500 in CIP. So we have actually $4.5 million for preventative maintenance. Yeah, 2030 number of 1 million, you know, that's so far out. We know that's going to have to be adjusted. That's really just a plug number at this point, so it's.
A placeholder?
Placeholder, yeah.
All right.
You know, we do that typically for the out years until we have a better idea.
And I probably put, should have put CIP funds in here, too. As you know, we only approve the one year, so anything beyond 2025 is technically not approved. But we do have a plan for CIP and 2J, so.
And, and yeah, I also appreciate the, the fact that we're approaching this in, in stages, and even though somebody lives in one area that's not going to be addressed, at least on this plan, there are, there are ways to identify areas that, even though they may look good today by next year, or the year down the road, that the conditions of the road might deteriorate. But I guess, I just wanted to pass this along, that I've had people ask me, and it was, the question was raised about if somebody finds or sees a pothole, or drives over a pothole, and they, they need to report it, you, when you go to the City of Wheat Ridge's webpage, you enter in the search, "report a pothole." And you can, you've got a hotline number for both DOT, for the Kipling and Wadsworths, and then you have a City of Wheat Ridge for all the rest of the streets, a form and a number for somebody to call if they see a pothole. And my attention's been brought to at least three or four within the past week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a never-ending job, is to take care of our potholes. But please, I would encourage the public to continue to report those to us.
Counselor Snell.
Thank you, and great presentation, thank you so much. Just a couple of additions to this. Appreciate you acknowledging the Ad-Apps and that plan. And I know that it seems like maybe on paper, like, oh, you're going to repave, why not just re-stripe and add bike lanes? I know that that's a lot more complicated than that, but just appreciate you considering it. It does seem to be working in some other communities, but it's, it's always different for everyone. Another thing that I just, in, in thinking about communicating with the public, it's in a lot of folks' very front of mind because of the whole trash hauler discussion, and you know, the, the argument about more trucks equals more damage to the streets. So I just, another, another thought about, the more information folks have, you know, maybe the better we'll be with, at least educating people. But this is great, and I'm happy to know about it. So thank you.
Maria, I had a, I had a question. One of the comments that I, that I hear rather frequently is that it appears that manhole covers are always in the, in the tire track of the roadway. Like, that must be by design, I assume. And, and a lot of times, it's, you know, we're driving down a, down a very well-surfaced road, and it's a, what's the, what's the normal deflection, or, or whatever the, the offset there that's, that's typical or, or normal? And how, how onerous it is to, is it to get back, get that back up to a satisfactory condition?
Certainly. Yeah, great question. The, so the manholes are typically accessing either sanitary sewer or storm sewer in some cases, which is, of course, the city. So what we like to have done is that those sit just below the pavement level. Unfortunately, we can't do much about the vertical deflection of where the manhole is, because that's already been set because of the line of the underlying pipe. So we can't necessarily move that, but we can depress them slightly below the pavement, so it's less of a jar. And so it's just working with either ourselves internally for storm sewer, if it's a water valve, or a sanitary sewer manhole, it's working with that individual district to, when we do the repaving, or if we need to have them set it a bit lower, so you have less of an uprise than a little bit of a lower within the pavement. We also want to do that for our plow trucks. As you can imagine, the plows don't want to hit that manhole, you're going to go right through the windshield, the driver will. So it's really imperative from a safety perspective, as well as the inconvenience when you go over it with the truck.
Most of them that I've seen are sort of depressed too far down.
Too far down, okay, yeah.
It's possible to put a ring on it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so there should be probably within, I would say, if there's a tolerance level, it's anywhere from an inch to two inches below the pavement surface. Even that's getting a little bit much. So ideally, it'd be almost level, if not set about an inch below the surface.
Okay. And what's the best way to report those into the city?
You can either contact the city through that, either report a pothole situation because that, any type of pavement deflection, or go, if you know the individual district that it's in, you can contact that water or sand district as well.
Okay. So it's up to the district, and how would one understand whether it's, whether it's a storm sewer, a water, a water main, or something like that?
Staff, or citizens aren't probably going to know that, so it is probably best to contact the city so that we can determine if it's something we can handle internally or hand it over to the, one of the water or sand districts. Yeah, we can be that centralized distribution to figure that out.
Thank you. Additional question, discussion? Counselor Ohm.
Yeah, I got one last question, comment, I guess. So I've seen other municipalities that do, speaking of the, the manhole covers, they do some type of like concrete around it.
Yeah.
Like a square. Is that something that the, the city has considered? Because I've seen in Wheat Ridge, where for whatever reason, the asphalt seems to go down around some of those manhole covers.
Yeah, I've seen that as well. I think there's maybe been mixed results, so you pour a concrete collar almost around those.
Yeah.
It tends to level it out, which is good. I think it's something we could certainly explore, as we become more, I would say, proactive in our pavement management. You know, looking at things like that, talking with our partners at the various districts, if that's something that they'd want to participate in, if they like that, because now all of a sudden, you've got that, it's harder for them to either raise or lower that when it's in a concrete collar. They're having to chip that out if they need to do anything. But yeah, it's certainly something we can evaluate to see if that would help. That might also help with the ride quality as you ride over one of those manholes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good suggestion.
Any further discussion on this item?
Okay, thank you very much, Maria. Thank you for a good, great discussion. Thank you for bringing your team. And Counselor Dozeman is okay? All right, good. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that, that concludes the three study items that we had, and let's see, I think we'll go to staff reports. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick items. I believe each of you have been contacted by Peter Wall, who represents Lamar Advertising, concerning digitizing billboards and electronic message boards. As you know, we currently do not allow those by city code, and Lamar is asking the city to consider changing that. So I'm asking tonight if there's consensus to bring that, or to a future study session to talk about in more detail.
Has it been a year since we changed that?
I think it's been, yeah, just over a year. But that's right, you and I. But that's right, you and I talked about that. We did have a, we did actually update the code about a year ago to make it very clear that billboards were not, cannot be digitized in the city. We never did allow it, but the code was never clear on it. So if you remember, I think it was about a year ago. And we do have a, I think a restriction in our code or council rules that you cannot bring up an item until a year after you've already brought it up or something. We'll look into that, but. So not suggesting we have to go one way or the other, but I know you, they've reached out to each one of you. I believe I've been told that there's some support to at least having a discussion about it. Just want to make sure that's the case before we study, schedule something.
Do we have consensus to, to bring that to a study session? Looks like we do.
Perfect. Thank you. You may have noticed that your study session packet looked maybe a little bit different tonight. It's formatted a little differently. We are implementing the changes that are required for the Accessibility Act or the ADA. That was our first go at the study session packet. Nothing really changes with content and categories. It's just everything kind of has to be shifted primarily to the left. You can't use underlines, you can't use different things primarily so that these, these documents, when they're online, can be read by a, a reader. So the next packet is very large for next Monday, so we're working on that. It's kind of a, a progress, we're working in baby steps to get it to where it needs to be. But we're past the deadline of when that has to be implemented. It was last June, I believe, the legislature delayed the fines that can be implemented until this next June. So, but we're making great progress on that. So that's what that is. We're also preparing for a retreat that is scheduled January 31st and February 1st. We sent out a brief survey for you all to complete. It's very short. If you haven't done it, please try to do that by Wednesday, if you could. And some interesting news, if you didn't hear, a Wheat Ridge graduate recently just won, was awarded the Medal of Freedom. Did you hear that? Tim Gill, went to Wheat Ridge High School. He's, has the Gill Foundation, Tim Gill Foundation, that supports a lot of LGBTQ issues and just got the Medal of Freedom from President Biden. So I thought that was pretty cool, along with Hillary Clinton and Bono. So good company. That's all I got. Yeah, it's pretty cool, dude. All comes back to lyrics.
All right. We will go to elected officials reports. Reports, Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the holiday break, I was, I don't know what I was looking for, but I wound up on the, the city of Wheat Ridge jobs page. I wasn't looking for a job, but somehow I found myself there. And on the, I believe it was the 23rd of December, there were eight jobs that were open that the city is looking to fill. That, that number, I just checked this morning, has gone down, but these are all, look like good jobs with good pay. So I would encourage anybody that is looking for, looking for work at this time to go ahead and look on the city website on a regular basis to see if there's jobs openings on there that might interest them. The second thing I had tonight is we've, those, those of us that live near Clear Creek have been aware of a sewer rehab project underway from Metro Water Recovery. This project has been going on for almost a year now. And it is rehabilitating the sanitary sewer line that runs pretty much along Clear Creek from all the way over at Commerce City to, I believe it's close to, well, it's into Lakewood. And the, if, if you've gone down the Clear Creek Trail near 44th, you've seen the signs up saying the, the, the trail is closed. And it, it seems that most people just ignore the sign and keep going. But that, and I don't really see a problem with that because there's, the work only goes on for short periods and there will be days at a time where there's no work at all. So just so long as everybody is aware, if you go to the Metro Water Recovery site, you can find out more about that project. There are three projects, three parts of that project going on in, in Wheat Ridge. One is along the trail between Carr and 44th. That one is due to wrap up here fairly soon. The other one is behind the New Gate Apartments along the Clear Creek Trail. These are all on the north side of the creek. And there's no date for that project, but it'll probably happen sometime in February, March. And then the other one is to, just to the west of Anderson Park, again, on the north side of the creek. And that project, I believe, begins the end of this month. So again, Metro Water Recovery is the place you want to go to see if there are any updates on that project. Thank you.
Counselor Weaver.
I would just like to remind everyone that the Stock Show starts this weekend and the parade will be in downtown Denver this Thursday at noon. I'll be down there. I'll be at Stock Show most days as a volunteer and, and I'd love for anyone from Wheat Ridge to come out and check out the Stock Show.
Thank you. Any further reports? Don't see any. We will be, do we have? Well, we'll be back here a week from tonight at 6:30 for our regular council meeting. So until then, everyone drive safely and carefully so that everyone gets home in a great fashion. Everyone had a happy holiday and ready for a, a bright and joyful 2025. So if there's no more business to come before us, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.